Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of March 3, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
On March 4, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this. Therefore, seating in the chamber is limited. And we'll make sure -- come on in, our guests over here, and there are some seats in the front. You'll see that there's some open spaces, and we welcome all of you. And at this time, would you all please stand and join me in the invocation, and following the invocation, Councilmember Smith will lead us in the pledge. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful community in which we live. Thank you for the gifts that you've given us, and we thank you for the privilege of being able to serve. And Father, tonight, we just ask that you would have your abiding peace pervade over this meeting. Father, give us wisdom to conduct the business, give us clarity of mind, and bring your presence into this chamber, we pray in your precious name. Amen.
Salute. Let.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may. Seated. Welcome, and we're glad to see all of you, and particularly glad to see our Golden Valley Bulldogs. So, go Bulldogs! We appreciate you all engaging in the civic process. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or lobby. Applause is allowed only during the presentations portion of the meeting, but isn't allowed during other portions. And please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, such as repetitive statements, going off-topic, shouting, surpassing the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Public Statements.
This meeting has limited public access, therefore, public comments were encouraged to be made to the city clerk through email or by phone call. If you're here in person to make a public statement, please fill out a speaker card and give it to the city clerk. All speakers -- all statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to speak on workshop -- any workshop item or hearing items 10A or 10B, we ask that you speak after staff's presentation on that matter. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Again, we ask you to please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, such as repetitive statements, going off-topic, shouting, surpassing the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Mayor Go, we've received four public speaker cards this evening, all four on separate sub.
Thank you.
I've received some additional public speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay. And as a reminder to all, all statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. We appreciate your input. Madam Clerk, please call the first public speaker.
Michael Turnipseed.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. Before I really start, I want to congratulate Mr. Clag on his anniversary. It was one year this week. He's been here, and I've enjoyed our many conversations. I really want to talk about three things tonight that I see that must be addressed by your council. These are long, simmering issues, I think: process transparency, equity, and city culture. I've been monitoring the TCC process. I wrote each of you a letter, my thoughts. It seems they expanded the comment period so more people could comment. They had a workshop, which I attended, and it seems there were just requests gone out in the last couple of days for requests, proposals for the same old projects and the same old downtown core. When we supported Measure N, it was about change. It's about raising all boats in the community, and there has to be some kind of decision-making based on return on investment. Well, the first thing they did with Measure N money was pick up trash and human waste on downtown. You didn't do it to anybody else, but just to downtown. The problem was all over the city. And now we see TCC funds, which are designed to go to disadvantaged communities and raise the boats. I think it was four years ago, the City of Bakersfield turned down $35 million because they wouldn't come up with projects that met the requirements of TCC. I hope the city does not make that mistake again. If not, we're going to have much more serious conversations than if the city doesn't need this TCC money. Why did we support Measure N? Why are you using our money to pick up trash that should have been taken care of in the two failed P bids? The local businesses taking care of their own neighborhoods to pick up trash and waste. I haven't a minute left. So I'm really concerned about that, and that this whole process of being -- everything's always predetermined. Concerned citizens put their time up, they make presentations. I read a beautifully written nine-page letter you received, things that needed to be done, and it probably ended up in the trash can the way things are. I have more concern in my last 40 seconds I heard about, too. This ongoing talk about Safe at Homes. I have been told, and I asked the question, is it true that city staff has conducted background checks online on citizens who complained about Safe at Home? That's a yes or a no question. I think people need to know they're talking. Even the fact they bring up that idea that the city is running background checks on its citizens, that is very appalling to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Next speaker, please. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Riddhi Patel. I live in City Councilmember Bruce Freeman's district, who has failed me repeatedly pretty much every city council meeting, as have all of you. I'm here to talk about the public -- the Measure N Vital Services Committee measure. You guys are throwing more money at it and more money at affordable housing projects, which are very necessary and needed for our unhoused community members, yet I still don't understand -- and I didn't see it on the agenda today, but I still don't understand why FEMA has allowed all shelter-in-place hotels to be completely reimbursable, and we have thousands of hotel rooms, and it's literally free, but you guys won't choose to house our community members. But my city councilmember Bruce Freeman has no trouble talking about the unhoused community members at Riverwalk Park like they aren't human beings. You guys will talk about affordable housing, and yet the disgrace and the disgusting nature of my city councilman Bruce Freeman, along with all of you, Ms. City Councilmember Patty Gray, who tried to say she wasn't racist last week by saying, "I have a black friend," which is incredibly racist, Ms. Patty Gray, but yet none of you have managed to adequately take use of FEMA and the fact that all of these hotel rooms, all of these shelter-in-place hotels are completely reimbursable and they are free. So you choose to let our unhoused community members stay on the streets every day. Furthermore, you guys might complain about the fact that it isn't on the agenda, but yet I know how this works. All of you guys have all of the Kern County Board of Supervisors' phone numbers. You guys can text them at any time you want. They are voting on a Kern County oil and gas ordinance that will greenlight more than 40,000 oil and gas wells in Kern County. Out of the 18,000 that were greenlighted under the 2015 ordinance, 17,900-plus of them, 97.9%, were in low-income areas, monolingual areas that are already disadvantaged of Kern County, and all of you guys have the power to step up and say, "We don't need this ordinance." It will literally kill communities in Kern County, and none of you have done that because you guys are all [bleep] jokes.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Next speaker, please.
Mayor.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. We've heard a couple of times already this notion that FEMA has a program available for the shelter-in-place program, and I just want to ask staff if they can look into this and see what opportunities there are for our unhoused population, so that we can see if this actually is a program that the city can qualify for and what the actual details are. I'd like to get clarity on this whole thing. Thanks.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Emma De La Rosa.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Emma De La Rosa. I'm a policy advocate with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, and today's comment is on behalf of my colleague, Olivia Siedman. Today, I appear here to ask that the council -- to ask the council to formally support Assembly Bill 339, a bill introduced to the California State Assembly by Assemblymember Alex Lee. AB 339 would provide greater public access to meetings of local agencies and the state legislature by promoting the use of telecommunications technology to allow remote participation and to increase language access for limited English proficient residents. Leadership Council is cosponsoring AB 339 because of our own experiences advocating alongside communities at both the state and local level. We frequently see how physical, geographic, and linguistic barriers prevent constituents, especially those from rural areas, who have a disability or who don't speak English, from engaging with their government, exacerbating existing marginalizations from the public participation process. Because this is a local government issue, we are seeking the support of local government agencies who would think -- who we think engage the public well. We are grateful for Bakersfield City Council's willingness to work with us on transparency in the public participation process and are excited to continue this work going forward. This bill has received support from city council members in Sacramento and Fresno and from a supervisor in Tulare County. AB 339 is also cosponsored by the ACLU of California and has received support from numerous community organizations, including the Lourdes Huerta Foundation, Faith in the Valley, Jakarta Movement, and Center on Race, Poverty, and the Environment in Bakersfield and in Kern County. As such, we ask that the council act to introduce a resolution in support of AB 339, which would help make local government more transparent, not only for our constituents in Bakersfield City, but also for Californians across the state. Leadership Council welcomes the opportunity to speak more to the council about AB 339 at a later date or to answer any questions the council may have. In closing, I want to reiterate why AB 339 is such an important issue. Democracy functions best when everyone is allowed to participate, but there are unfortunately many limits to who can participate and how they are allowed to do so. AB 339 helps eliminate some of those limits, leading to a more fair and just democracy for all Californians, regardless of ability, language, or geography. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to the council's response regarding a resolution in support of AB 339. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Emma, I just want to say thank you so much for bringing this bill to our attention, and I also want to thank city staff for doing their due diligence during COVID. I know it's been tough to kind of accommodate and create these new avenues so that the public can continue to participate, whether that's in person or virtually calling in or leaving voicemails and that sort of thing. So thank you guys so much for working so hard on that. I actually want to make a referral to the Legend Lit Committee that they take a look at AB 339 and see if there's room for the council to support this piece of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Michael Harless.
Please introduce yourself.
Michael Harless, and I'm bringing this attention again to about the get bus night service being eliminated in October if we don't do nothing about it, because people have to get to work, go to work, go to school, go to activities, go to meetings, whatever, and if the buses stop running at 7:00, you're not able to get home. This includes the downtown area and Ward 2, and I turned in some signatures from a petition regarding the people that wants to save the night service, as well as in the 3:30 meeting, there was other people that talked about the same issue, and they turned in some signatures as well. Bakersfield wants the night service, and it's saying because of low ridership, they don't want it. And we need to fight this because of the fact that nobody's ever going to be able to get home if we don't. Also, I'd like to get an update on the Brundage Union bus stop being repaired. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harless. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, the following five speakers will be speaking regarding Golden Valley Crosswalk. The first speaker is Natalie Santa Maria.
Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name, again, is Natalie Santa Maria, and I am here representing Visioni Compromiso, which is a nonprofit organization. I am not specifically going to talk about the crosswalk, but it is -- it's all related to, okay? Because we're going to be asking for the city council to be joining an effort with all of us, along with Greenfield Walking Group. Just wanted to make that clear. So imagine a city designed with well childhood being at its center that fosters healing and resilience so that all children of all backgrounds can thrive. All Children Thrive California is an initiative that does just that. ACT is here in support of the recommendations Greenfield Walking Group and the youth speakers have put forward to create a safe space around their high school. The work that Greenfield Walking Group does, along with Visioni Compromiso, embodies the value of All Children Thrive Initiative. It is a community-led movement, uniting teams of community members and city leaders to develop a vision for their city that supports the well-being of children and family in all aspects of life by focusing on sustainable, long-term policy changes and actions that set communities up for success. ACT supports cities across California to develop and implement plans for a brighter future. We would like to invite the City of Bakersfield to be an All Children Thrive pilot city through the program designed by Greenfield Walking Group and Visioni Compromiso that advocates for health-promoting land use planning and environmental justice in Greenfield and other under-resourced communities through identified policy and system change that is based on local community needs and promotes health and well-being for all children and their families. ACT Cities receive technical assistance and coaching, capacity development, and funding to support this work. We would like to follow up with city council to provide additional information and meet to discuss how All Children Thrive can support the community of Bakersfield and the incredible already work accomplished here. With this, you know, more people are going to be talking about the crosswalk on Golden Valley, and I think this is a great opportunity to continue the work in other communities. Again, we will follow up with city council to continue the conversation around this and involve staff from ACT. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santa Maria. Next speaker, please.
Jeanette C. Santa Maria.
Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeanette C. Santa Maria. I'm currently a student at Golden Valley High School, and I would walk to school every day, and the only way I would get home is through the crosswalk, which leads into my neighborhood. There has been many times where I felt unsafe because of the speed cars have gone, and since there's no stop signs or any lights, cars tend to go fast, and once they go fast, they don't see the sign, and once they do, it's too late, and there they are speeding. And not only now, but since I have a small -- I'm so sorry. Not only now, am I more concerned for my safety, but I'm also concerned for my little brother, who is seven years old, and every day we have to walk to school to go pick up food, and there have been multiple times where cars have been speeding, and I had to make sure my brother was not walking and that we're both paying attention. So I ask that you please approve the addition of lights or signal to help prevent any faculty and students, so my peers, my little brother, and myself can feel a bit more safe walking home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santa Maria. Next speaker, please.
Barbara Perez. Hello. My name is Barbara Perez. I am a youth volunteer for Greenfield Walking Group and a former student at Golden Valley High School, and I just wanted to start off by thanking the city council members for hearing us out. And so to elaborate on what the previous two speakers had spoken about, we started working on a crosswalk on Monitor Street, right next to Golden Valley, and unfortunately, this conversation had stopped because it was right at the beginning of quarantine. Fortunately, now, we have had the opportunity to work with the city council members to further work on this crosswalk, make it safer for the students and pedestrians alike to walk. So as mentioned previously, they have felt unsafe crossing that crosswalk because there have been tire marks that have covered the paint, so it's not visible to drivers. There is no light indication, so drivers can see that this is a place where people cross to get to where they need to go. And so we, right now, we have the great opportunity to work with ACT, All Children Thrive, an organization, so that we can implement complete street policies and so we can also address the mental wellness concerns of children in their neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Go. I am unable to discern this individual's name, but they reside on Hosking.
Is that Mr. Hellman? Is that your speaker card? This is Principal Paul Hellman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'm here tonight in support of the Greenfield Walking Group as it pertains to safe pedestrian pathways to school in normal times. Over 2,700 students enter the gates at Golden Valley every day, and we want to make sure that they enter those gates in a safe manner and have safe pathways in getting there. The Kern High School District currently has a one-and-a-half-mile walk-in boundary, and so students within that area come from all directions, primarily from the north and west in the campus. The crosswalks in question are on Monitor, corners of Monitor, and Hosking, and since the implementation of the building of the interchange on 99, we've seen a tremendous increase in traffic. So I want to commend the city, though, for the paint and signage already, and just also commend the city every time we've called with a need, whether it be a traffic light or something in the community, their response has been excellent, and we appreciate your support. So thank you for hearing me out tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hellman. Next speaker, please. Madam Clerk.
Gemma Perez.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you.
In Espanol?
Gracias. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Gemma Perez. Soy miembro de -- director of the Greenfield Walking Group.
Good afternoon. My name's Gemma Perez. I am the director of Greenfield Walking Group.
Gracias por tenernos aquí.
Thank you for having us here.
Siempre que estoy aquí, me siento bien emocionada.
I always get very excited to be here.
Estoy muy contenta porque nosotros somos un medio entre las necesidades de la comunidad y entre ustedes que toman las decisiones.
I am very happy because I feel we are the bridge between community needs and you, city council.
Y siempre traemos dos cosas bien importantes, y las decisiones que ustedes toman ayudan mucho a la seguridad de la comunidad.
We always bring issues that are important to the community, and your decisions always help to maintain the safety of our communities.
Y son por muchos años.
And this has been a relationship for many, many years.
Quiero agradecer especialmente porque en la reunión en febrero.
I'd like to thank especially from our February meeting.
Con el miembro del Consilio, Chris Parlier.
With City Councilmember Parlier.
Y Eric Arias.
And City Councilmember Arias.
Que estuvieron escuchando sobre la petición que tenemos de la importancia que es de poner alguna señal en esta cruz.
Who listened to us in regards to this crosswalk and having more signage and lighting.
Y también al director de obras públicas, Nick Fidler.
And also the director of Public Works, Nick Fidler.
Aha. Ryan Starbuck.
Ryan Starbuck.
Y Emurfy.
Emurfy.
Porque participaron en la reunión y ayudaron a buscar alternativas.
Because they participated in this February meeting and helped to look for alternatives.
Gracias, y estamos aquí siempre para ponernos a su disposición en lo que podamos. También nosotros, no nada más ustedes ayuden a nosotros, nosotros también que podemos ser parte de las soluciones que hay.
Thank you for always being at our disposition, and let us be at your disposition to see how we can collaborate.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Thank you so much for your leadership in our community. Councilmember Parlier.
Is that it on the speakers on this topic, Mayor? Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I want to thank all the speakers and the Greenfield Walking Group for coming here tonight, and for those that don't know, I just want to give a little history about this group. It's made up primarily of Hispanic women who take ownership of their community. That community is predominantly within Ward 7 and Ward 1. They have just been a real asset to the community and these wards. They -- and I'm going to brag on them here for a second, too. They have the best community garden in the whole city of Bakersfield. It is just incredible, and I look forward, the next time you have food there, please make sure -- please make sure I'm invited. Also, Stern Park, when there were some problems there structurally with the park and some crime issues, they stepped up, and I think that's one of the safest parks we have now also. Now, when it comes to this crosswalk, I've been out there, I've taken a look at this. We've had Zoom meetings with myself, Public Works, Nick Fidler, Councilman Arias, the group, and it is a hazard. And when school starts back, it's going to be a growing hazard. There's been street racing out there, and the traffic has exponentially increased with the Hosking ramp. And housing, housing continues to grow in that area. In a conversation we had with Public Works, they said there wasn't necessarily money available at this time for capital improvement projects, and maybe some grant opportunities came online that we could look at those, but those were down the road, and I think that this is a project that needs to be done as soon as possible. In fact, I'd like us to ask -- I'd like to ask for council contingency funds to be available to be used this fiscal year for the crossing, and I was really surprised when we had the conversation with Public Works. I thought it was going to just be a few thousand dollars for some crosswalk flashing signs, but there was quite an expense to go with it. I will put a caveat on there, if there's some other funds available, again, for this fiscal year that staff wants to use, then that's fine, too, but I'd really like to see this project, and I believe my colleague does, too, as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. And that community garden that you referred to, the ladies are out there at 5:00 AM with their phones sometimes as flashlights. their phones sometimes as flashlights gardening in the hot summer, and the garden is amazing. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Emma y todos los jóvenes, gracias por venir aquí hoy. Es un placer para trabajar con ustedes. And I'm going to continue in English because my Spanish struggles. But I just think the world of you guys. I think you guys are exemplary role models and citizens of this community, and I think that frankly, we need more of you guys in different parts of Bakersfield and certainly in Ward One. So, I just want to say thank you guys for continuing to work. I'm still waiting for the opportunity to go and celebrate the soccer park there at Fairview. I know that there was a lot of work done there. I know it's a county pocket, but it's still deep in my heart to continue to support all the work that you guys are doing. So, I just want to say that I am in full support of Councilmember Parlier's recommendation. And then I also want to see, I don't know if Nick Fiddler is still here, but I want to see if we could also take a look at some of the sidewalks there in that community. We want to make sure that it's a priority for those students that they have safe access to walk to and from school. And so, if we could just follow up with Nick and see if there's any available funding. I know we had some conversations about a month ago about some potential funds that we could utilize for projects exactly like this. So, if we could also do that in tandem with Councilmember Parlier's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, we have a presentation by the Office of California State Insurance Commissioner.
Thank you. City Manager Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have Ms. Sally Westlake, who's going to be joining us by Zoom this evening. Ms. Westlake is an Associate Insurance Compliance Officer in the Community Relations and Outreach Branch of the California Department of Insurance, and she's responsible for coordinating many of the outreach programs and developing partnerships with community-based organizations and conducting presentations like this to educate the public. And tonight, we'll be highlighting one of the programs available through the State Department of Insurance that could benefit many of our residents. And so, we invite Ms. Westlake to move forward with that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for the opportunity to present to you the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, also known as the CLCA program. Next slide, please. Today, I'll start with a brief overview of the California Department of Insurance. I'll tell you what the California law is and why you need auto insurance, then introduce you to the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, what it is, how you qualify, and how you can apply for the program. Next, how can we partner together to share this program within your community? And then we can end the session with a Q and A. Next slide, please. When I stand with the Department of Insurance, I'm asked, can I have a quote? Well, no, because the state does not sell insurance. We're the state agency that regulates the insurance marketplace. California Department of Insurance is the largest consumer protection agency in the state. We regulate all lines of insurance, including homeowners, auto, life insurance, health, and many more. We also regulate the insurance companies, agents, and brokers that sell insurance. We audit insurance companies to make sure they stay solvent, to make sure they can pay your claim after an accident. We license the agents and brokers to make sure they follow the California Insurance Code. Why all this regulation, you might ask? Because California is the largest insurance market in the United States and the fourth largest in the world. In California, insurance companies collect over $340 billion in annual premiums. That's what you and I pay in premiums. So, our elected insurance commissioner, Ricardo Lara, ensures that insurers are solvent, consumer complaints are addressed in a reasonable manner, and insurers and licensees play fairly in the marketplace. Next slide, please. So, what can we do for you, the consumer? Anytime you have a question about insurance, call us. If you're shopping for insurance and want to know more, visit our website. If you deny a claim, coverage, your agent or insurance company not returning your call, call us and file a formal complaint. We can help. On our website, we have educational information about every line of insurance. We have resources, phone numbers for every insurance company. You can look up your agent or broker to make sure they're licensed. We also have tools to assist you when shopping for insurance, like the premium survey, the complaint study, and so much more. Please visit our website at insurance.ca.gov. Next slide, please. So, why do we need auto insurance? It's the law. If you drive a car in California, the law says you have to have evidence of financial responsibility. One way is to buy auto insurance. At minimum, you have to have liability insurance. Liability insurance means if you cause damage to someone else's property, you have to be able to pay for it. It'll not cover damages to your car that you caused. If you get pulled over and can't prove you have auto insurance, you can be fined, your license suspended, your vehicle impounded, and all these costs could add up to more than buying insurance from this program. Next slide, please. So, the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program was established by the Legislature in 1999 as a program designed to provide income-eligible, good drivers with liability insurance at affordable rates as a way to meet California's mandatory auto insurance law, regardless of their immigration status. A CLCA policy offers a basic minimum liability coverage to drive legally. It's liability insurance for low to moderate-income Californians. It's a state program and sponsored by the California Department of Insurance. Since its inception, the program has evolved and now it's available to almost all low-to-moderate-income Californians. As long as you're income-eligible, not a bad driver, you can qualify and pay as little as $244 a year. And the goal of this program is to reduce the number of uninsured motorists in California. Next slide, please. So, how do you qualify? First, you have to have a valid driver's license or an AB-60 license. Second, the value of the car has to be under $25,000 and not financed with a loan. Next, check your income level. It's based on the number of people in your household, including all dependents. You also have to be at least 16 years old. And lastly, you can't have a bad driving record for the past three years. If you have more than one point on your record or an asphalt accident with bodily injury, you won't qualify. Next slide. Let's look at how much does a CLCA policy cost? The CLCA program is available to all residents of California. The premium is based on, number one, the county you live in, and, number two, your age and driving history. So, if you're a good driver, driving for the past three years with no asphalt accident with bodily injury, and one point or less in your driving record, you would pay the lowest premium at the base rate for your county. From the base rate, the premium will increase depending on your age and driving history. Still, this policy will cost less than most policies out in the market. Now, let's look at the income eligibility chart. If you have a four-person household, the maximum income level is $66,250. This threshold does change every year and is based on 250% of the federal poverty level. If you currently qualify for other state-county assistance programs based on income, you'll also qualify for this program as well. So, in current county, the base lowest rate is only $263 a year. 20% down payment is about $53, and the highest on an auto policy in Kern County would be $526. Next slide, please. So, the coverage limits. The CLCA policy offers the basic minimum liability coverage you need to drive legally. That's up to $10,000 per person in case of bodily injury or death, and up to $20,000 per accident, and up to $3,000 for property damage. Next slide. So, what do you need to apply? You need a valid driver's license or an AB-60 license. You need a valid car registration or proof of ownership. You'll also need proof of income, and I'll go over more on income later. And you have to have a down payment of at least 20% of the annual premium. Just imagine, you don't have to look over your shoulder or feel nervous when you see a patrol car as you're driving without insurance. Give yourself a peace of mind by getting insurance with the CLCA program. Next slide. Next slide, please. So, a complete list of acceptable proof of income is available on our website, but a few examples would be a paycheck stub, a W-2, 1099, or any statement of benefit from unemployment or SSI statements. And if you're currently enrolled in another state or county program like CalFresh, CalWorks, Medi-Cal, you'll be qualifying for the CLCA program based on income. Next slide, please. So, how do you apply for the program? You start by going to the website, mylowcostauto.com. You take the eligibility questionnaire. It's only 13 questions. Next, you'll fill out an online application. Then an agent will contact you to gather the documents and collect the down payment. That's it. And if you have additional questions or need assistance filling out the application, you can use the chat feature on the website. It's available in English or Spanish, or you can call us at 866-602-8861 if you need additional assistance. Next slide, please. So, now you're thinking, this is a great program, and I want to share this with my organization, city, districts, et cetera? Fantastic. Here's how you can partner with CDI and the CLCA program. Help us get the word out. You can help with disseminating CLCA brochures in your community. Share the CLCA program info on your website and social media platforms. Invite us to attend your outreach events. Invite us to speak at your staff trainings or events, and refer us to any other partners that work with low-to-moderate-income households. So, at the end of this meeting, I'm hoping we can get our CLCA program information on the city of Bakersfield website. Next slide, please. So, if you want to apply for the program or have any more questions about the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, you'd visit mylowcostauto.com or call 866-602-8861. If you have any insurance-related questions or problems, you can visit www-insurance.ca.gov or call us at 1-800-927-4357. Thank you, Councilmembers and Mayor, for the opportunity to be here today and present this wonderful program to you. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Westlake. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Sally, it's so great to see you again, even though it's through Zoom. I appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to come before us and talk about this important program that's really designed at keeping our streets safe and making sure that, you know, especially our young teenagers are insured while they're on the roads. So, thank you so much for that presentation. If I could ask for staff to engage with Sally to figure out what some of the best ways are to work with her on getting that information out into our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember.
Excuse me. And then if I could just make a motion to receive and file this presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Are there any public comments related to this particular workshop item? Madam Clerk?
I have not received any public speaker cards on this item.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, for receiving and file. Oh, I'm sorry? Okay. We have motion to receive and file.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you very much. I was talking with the city clerk. Can't do two things. Thank you, Councilmember Arias. And now, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AG for approval. We received a staff memorandum requesting item 8M be removed from the agenda.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Gonzalez requested item 8J be removed for separate consideration, so I move item 8A through 8AG be approved except for item 8J and 8M.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Gonzalez for item 8J.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to refer this item back to staff for further staff analysis.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statements succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the mic and identify yourself. After 15 minutes, after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on, and at the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly, enter statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the city clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing items?
The first item, hearings item 10A, Housing Authority of the County of Kern, 22nd Street Lofts Affordable Housing Project. Number one, resolution, and number two, an indemnification agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Yes, Mayor and Council, just really briefly to provide some clarity about what this item is and isn't. This is a project that your council has actually taken action on previously, actually a year ago in March of 2020, but it is not a city project, and this hearing does not impact city funding. This is a requirement of the US Treasury that local governments hold hearings when projects like this are going to bond to build those projects. This is a housing authority project that will be bonding for these funds, so it does not incur any obligations to the city, does not impact city budgets, but we hold this hearing on behalf of entities building these projects within our jurisdiction. Again, the council approved a resolution, as noted in the materials on this item, and as I just mentioned a year ago, but there is a 12-month period on that resolution, and so there is one notable action that this would provide an extension on that timeframe. But essentially, this, again, is a bond proceeds for a project that the housing authority will be building.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the adoption of this resolution and approving of the indemnification agreement.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question. I think I saw elsewhere, this is the 20, maybe you can clarify for me, Christian, 20 units. And did I see elsewhere it was 6.4?
8M. 8Ms.
Excuse me?
8M.
Oh, okay. It's 20 units, and what's the total cost of the 20 units? Even though it's not our money, we'd like to know how much it is.
What I can tell you is what the bond amount is for is an aggregate amount not to exceed $4 million. I don't believe that means it's going to cost exactly $4 million, but that's the amount of the bonds being approved by this hearing, and it is 20 affordable senior multifamily housing units.
So, $200,000 a unit plus probably other contributions, maybe $250,000 or something per unit.
There are other funding sources anticipated for this project beyond the bonding, so that would be an accurate formula.
Well, I'm glad it's not city funds, about double what it costs to build those units, just about 100% more than it should. just about 100% more than it should cost. But I won't hold this up, so if we can go ahead and also.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. And now you have a motion before you. Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next hearing item, please.
Hearings item 10B, Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Resolutions Concerning Two Appeals by Hagan Law Group, LLP. On behalf of their client, Progress for Bakersfield Veterans LLC. Staff memorandum has been received regarding this item and transmitting correspondence received after the publication of the agenda from both the applicant and the appellant.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Planning Director Paul Johnson will speak to this item.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Pleasure to be here. As the city clerk noted, this is two separate items, two appeals. They are interrelated, so there will be one presentation. The first appeal is to the Planning Commission's adoption of a mitigated negative declaration or MND for the Department of Veterans Affairs outpatient clinic and the Planning Commission's approval of a site plan review to facilitate development of the same clinic. The project site is located on Newton Drive between Olive Drive to the north and Hagaman Road to the south. The zone classification for the site is M2 or general manufacturing. The project, a VA community-based clinic providing primary and specialty care. It is outpatient only, so the operations will be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The clinic will be a single-story facility over 39,000 square feet, of which 30,100 is considered net usable square feet. To provide a little background, this project was submitted to the city for review in May of last year. It was reviewed by various city departments. Revisions to the plans were made to comply with city development standards. And in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigated negative declaration or MND was prepared and circulated for public review. On January 7th of this year, the Planning Commission adopted the MND for the clinic. And in accordance with city policy, the following day, the Development Services Director approved the site plan review for the clinic. A week after that, Hagan Law Group filed an appeal, filed two appeals. Excuse me. The first appeal was to the director's decision to approve the site plan review. And the second appeal was to the Planning Commission's adoption of the MND. It should be noted that directors' decisions are appealed directly to the Planning Commission. So on February 4th, the Planning Commission considered the appeal. And following public testimony and deliberations, the Planning Commission voted to deny the appeal and approve the site plan review. February 12th, Hagan Law Group filed an appeal to the Planning Commission's decision to approve the site plan review. So that takes us to tonight, where again, your council is considering two appeals. So the first is the Planning Commission's adoption of the MND for the VA outpatient clinic and Planning Commission's approval of the site plan review to facilitate construction of the same clinic. Pursuant to the Bakersfield Municipal Code, appeals shall include the appellant's interest in or relationship to the subject property. And in this case, Hagan Law Group was acting on behalf of Progress for Bakersfield Veterans, LLC. And this company currently owns and operates the VA clinic on Westwind Drive, and that's located approximately Oak and Truxton. The appeal shall also provide specific reasons why the decision should not be upheld. And in this case, those decisions are identified in the admin report for your council. And those also include staff's response to each of those reasons. As part of the public notification for this project, the Kern County Board of Supervisors submitted letters in support of the VA clinic. Dick Taylor, who's in the audience today, also submitted a letter in support. And Pacific Gas and Electric provided comments noting that the project will not interfere with their existing facilities or easements. As the city clerk noted, we received two comments, correspondence subsequent to public release of the admin report from Rutan and Tucker representing the applicant. And Solari Mazur was acting on behalf of the appellant. Those comments were provided to you both digitally and a printed copy tonight. I should note that a majority of the comments by Solari Mazur are repetitive of those submitted to the Planning Commission, and staff believes the record speaks for itself. Nonetheless, the applicant's representative is in the audience and can speak in more detail. Your city council has several options tonight. You may adopt resolutions denying the appeals and thereby adopting the MND or mitigated negative declaration and approving the site plan review. Your council could adopt resolutions upholding the appeals and therefore rescinding the Planning Commission's adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and denying the site plan review. Or if there's additional information that is needed tonight to make an informed decision that cannot be obtained, you can continue the hearing. Based on evidence in the record, it's staff's recommendation that you adopt resolutions denying the appeals and approve the VA outpatient clinic. This completes staff's presentation, and I'm available if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Meaning, anyone who opposes the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and the approval of the site plan review of the veterans clinic? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. So this is anyone who opposes the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration. I don't see any requests to speak. Now, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in favor of staff's recommendation? Meaning, anyone who favors the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and the approval of the site plan review of the veterans clinic? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. My name is Alan Fenstermacher. I'm with the law firm, Rutan and Tucker, and I represent the applicant for the project. I will keep this very brief as the appellant's, you know, they've not even bothered to show up. You know, the first point I want to make is all of the appellant's arguments about the project and the issues they claim, you know, with the MND have to be taken with a grain of salt because, you know, they're motivated by financial incentive to delay this project as long as possible so they can keep their current facility open. I mean, that really is the bottom line. And, you know, that's what this is all about. We've got a 60-plus-page letter with exhibits that was dropped on you yesterday. You know, that's done in hopes of creating delay and confusion, not in hopes of actually giving you all time to read it and consider what's being said. So please, you know, when you're evaluating the MND, you're entitled to take into account the credibility of comments. So, you know, please take that into account. Secondly, my office has reviewed the comments in detail despite their length and late nature. And we strongly believe there is still no substantial evidence to support a fair argument that there would be a substantial impact on the environment. And what that means is the MND is legally adequate. That is our professional opinion, and we stand behind that. Additionally, there is absolutely no credibility to the argument that a CUP is required on this site. The use is permitted, just like the existing VA facility. Same use, same zoning restrictions, no CUP there. Again, that argument is simply not credible. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on the alleged issues raised. Our offices review that in detail. But I would just want to close in saying that, you know, my client is really interested in bringing a fabulous state-of-the-art facility to the city and the veteran community. And we're interested in doing that as fast as possible. And the fact is, despite what the appellant is saying, they've been eliminated by the VA. They are not getting this proposal. So we simply want to move forward, and please don't be distracted by these delay tactics. So with that, I just would respectfully request that you deny both the appeals and approve the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Welcome. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Brian Smith. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I served four years active duty in the United States Marine Corps. My son served in the Marine Corps in Iraq. My stepson is in the Green Beret. My father, brother, three brothers-in-law's all served in the military. I'm not here to go against the owners of the current VA clinic. In fact, I understand that they're just trying to protect their interests. However, we have a chance to improve the treatment and the lives of so many veterans. As an assistant chief with the Highway Patrol, I knew then that if we receive funding for special projects, we better take them and use them, or they would be redirected to other parts of the state and we wouldn't get to use them. Case in point, the widening of the U.S. 101 freeway in Santa Barbara. Caltrans authorized millions of dollars to add more lanes to freeways to alleviate congested traffic. However, the residents fought it in court, and now, 35 years later, they are now working on that project. You as our representatives need to deny these appeals and allow this wonderful, state-of-the-art project to get started. We made promises to fellow veterans that they were going to get a new and improved facility over 10 years ago, and yet we still have not broken ground. I will close with this. When our veterans were told to go to war, they didn't delay and fight it in court. They answered the call and responded and saved our lives. I think it's time we stop fighting one another and we answered the call to save their lives. Thank you so much for listening today.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you for your service and the service of your family. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation?
Good afternoon.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Tom Poor, and a Bakersfield resident. I'm a Navy veteran. Served the country during World War II. In fact, I actually was in Tokyo Bay when they signed the armistice, just a quarter of a mile away from where I was. I watched it with binoculars. I was with Admiral Wilkinson, who was in command of the Third Amphibian Force. In Manila, we had assembled 44 ships to invade Japan. We gave the occupation force instead of the invasion force, saving millions of lives. My son-in-law used the current facilities, and he found it only a bus stop to go, to pick up people to go to Los Angeles. This facility needs to be built. We've got our military people coming back with both mental and physical problems that should be taken care of here in this community. And I would appreciate the company or the government building this facility to take care of these young men and women that are coming back from their services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poor. Thank you for your service to our country. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation?
Good evening.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Dick Taylor. I wish I had some kind of humorous comment about the fact that back in 2010, this was first authorized, and here we are in 2021, and we haven't even stuck a shovel in the earth. Again, my name is Dick Taylor. In my former role as the county veteran service officer for the county of Kern, I had the honor and privilege to serve the 40,000-plus veterans in our county and reported directly to the Kern County Board of Supervisors. My charge was to ensure those veterans, their dependents, and survivors received the benefits they earned as a result of their honorable military service. It was a true joy to work with many of you when I served in that capacity. Regarding the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs Community-Based Outpatient Clinic, or CBOC, as I'll call it, several positive characteristics of the VA's Olive and Newton Site caught my eye. Its proximity to State Route 99, Kern County Fire Department is right across the street. There's a secondary backup station 2.8 miles away. The 6.9-acre site is spacious, has a healing garden, lots of shade trees, area for seating, and an outdoor eating area at some point when we're able to eat together. The quest for a replacement VA CBOC has spanned several presidential administrations, 11 years. We came close to getting a new clinic several times, only to have our dreams doused by either government bureaucracy or outside pressure like we're seeing today. I've seen thousands of deserving local veterans pass away while they waited for our new VA CBOC to get built. We now have the opportunity to provide a new, and I'll say this phrase again, we've heard it a lot tonight, state-of-the-art clinic, and it is exactly that, a VA CBOC to replace the current one, which has certainly outlived its design lifespan. I served in the Marine Corps. Our family has proudly served in every branch of this nation's military since 1776, from the Revolutionary War through the Civil War, World War I, World War II, Vietnam, and Iraq. Some of them were killed in action or gravely wounded. But our family's history is not that unique. In fact, it is representative of the sacrifices and legacies of thousands of families in Kern County that they have made. As much as we owe those veterans living in our community this VA CBOC, as importantly, we owe it to the memory of those veterans who are no longer with us and represent those many families in every part of our county, a commitment to stop this obstructionist pattern of working the VA facilities system to further delay the construction of our new CBOC. In closing, I want to say our veterans have earned and deserved to have this new clinic. We, as a community and a nation, can be proud to have provided them the best and most timely medical treatment available. And I'll add this, the staff that is at the current clinic, great people. They're just going to have a new office. They're going to have a brand-new building. I hope this project can move forward as soon as possible without more delays. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for your service to our country and your service to our community. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. As the only veteran currently serving on the Bakersfield City Council, I'm excited about this project. Other veterans that I talked to in the community, they're excited about this project. And it's more than just a Bakersfield project. This is going to be a regional center to help provide services for those outlying communities, including places like Porterville. So it's my honor to make the motion to accept staff recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Gray.
Say thank you also for the legacy that you've left, your family, but every vet in this audience tonight. It is a blessing to be here and to be able to honor you. I am the proud daughter of a 100-year-old World War II vet who is still living, naval officer of amphibious landings. And he was part of that whole campaign or auditorium-type thing that you all were doing. And it's just, it's exciting. I also have a grandson who is serving in the U.S. Army today up in Alaska. So in my opinion, when our city can honor our vets, it tells a lot about our character. And Bakersfield is a city that honors people, and I am so excited. The last place that we need to be cutting corners is to the people who have given us the right to assemble here tonight and have that precious freedom that we. and have that precious freedom that we all enjoy. So I am so much for denying this appeal, and I hope we can all be out there with shovels real soon, scooping dirt. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I really wasn't going to speak much to this project tonight because I truly believe the project speaks for itself. Veterans of our community deserve this facility. It has been delayed way too long. I remember back years ago when Kevin McCarthy came to town and we were announcing this VA clinic, and I got to speak because it was going into the best ward in Bakersfield. And I cannot believe that we're still talking about this today. It is way past time for this to move forward, and the next time there's a big vote in Ward Seven, I'm going to make the motion.
You're in trouble, Councilmember Parlier.
I was using the veteran trump card.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to say thank you to some of my friends there, Mr. Taylor and I know Ms. Taylor there in the back. Thank you, guys, for coming. It's so good to see you, guys. I just want to say, as the son of a Marine who grew up in part on Camp Pendleton and was fed MREs when supper was ready, and my father hid that fact from us and fed us those MREs, I know a thing or two about, you know, what it takes to live on base and all the sacrifices that you guys have made. So thank you, guys, for your service once more. You know, being, coming from a household where many members of the family have had complications, health complications, as a result of serving, and them having to travel all the way down to L.A. oftentimes to get reevaluated or check in on whatever it is, the condition it is that they have. I am so excited and honored to be on this council today, to vote in support of this measure. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. I don't see any other requests to speak, so you have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you again, veterans, for your service to our country and for purchasing our freedom. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Colleagues, I don't see any requests to speak. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one referral tonight. The mayor and city council have received concerns regarding e-bikes on the Kern River bike path and the city's position on that topic. In talking with the city attorney, she indicated the city code should be updated to clarify the definitions of e-bikes and motorized vehicles and the council's position on what should and should not be allowed on the Kern River bike path. Accordingly, I would like to refer this matter to Legend Lit for discussion and a recommendation back to the council. Thank you. And I also have a request for staff. According to our council calendar, there are five weeks between our March seventeenth meeting and our April twenty-first council meeting. That is a long timeframe, and at a minimum, we need a closed session to discuss some items. So I'm asking that the city manager and the city clerk schedule a special meeting of the city council on March thirty-first, shooting for a noon-time start and the session to end at 3:30 for other business, if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks, Mayor. There's some street sign deterioration in Ward Seven. One area is, well, actually, both areas are west of Wyville. One is south of McKee, one is north of Hosking. I just want to make the referral, but I'll follow up later with staff with General Services and give specifics on the streets and the signs. So there were some people to talk tonight, and they're passionate, and I like that, and I like their passion. But I have a different take. So I made some notes here. Let me put my glasses on. It's on California ground energies. So I just want to give a little recap, and I just pulled this off the state California Energy Commission site. And as far as ground energy that is used within California, ninety-three percent of it comes in from other sources and other countries. And I'll just give you the top few here. Ninety, I'm sorry, twenty-nine percent Saudi Arabia, twenty percent Ecuador, fourteen percent Colombia, eight percent Iraq, seven percent Kuwait, and it goes on for there, totaling, again, ninety-three percent. The seven percent that's left over is other, and it comes from different regions. But of that seven percent, only a fraction of that comes from Kern County. Now, Kern County has about fifty thousand ancillary jobs employed in the ground energy industry. And that is, you had your turn, it's mine now. So...
Ms. Patel, you're out of order. Go ahead, Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, what, there's a difference of opinion.
Ms. Patel, that is your warning. You are not to speak from there. And if you do again, I'm going to ask an officer to escort you out. Go ahead, Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, of the fifty thousand jobs that are approximately provided within a community, a large portion of those are from the minority community. A lot of them live in my ward, and they want to keep their jobs, and they don't want it going to foreign countries. Now, we all know that we live in a world ecosystem, just like the pollution, because we're in a bowl here in a valley. That pollution, a lot of it, comes from Northern California. It comes down the valley, it comes from the Bay Area. And it was quite a while ago, but the California actually did an article regarding pollution that comes across the ocean from Asia and countries like China that is actually affecting our air in the valley here, too. So with that, I think it's important that we recognize the clean energies that are being produced here. Because right now, of those countries that are bringing that ninety-three percent of ground energies over again, they're coming over on dirty diesels. Those aren't nuclear tankers or anything. Those are diesel-generated motors that are spewing, you know, stuff into the atmosphere. California has one of the most stringent environmental regulations of anywhere in the country. And with that, I make a motion that we support the county's comprehensive ordinance in SEER to protect those fifty thousand jobs and employees that provide good-paying, sustainable wages for, again, minority communities and others within Bakersfield and the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Did you mean that to be a referral?
Correction, a letter of support from the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one quick referral. You know, my heart is broken after the number of shootings that our city had over the weekend, one of them happening at Amokke Park, and then a subsequent fight moving to Kern Medical. And so my heart just breaks for the families and victims of that gun violence. And so tonight, I think it's timely that we make a referral per some conversations that I've had with fellow colleagues of mine on this council, that we ask for the chief to bring back an item in safe neighborhoods so that we can discuss ongoing staffing challenges and retainment of officers. I know it's been challenging because of COVID, and we've seen a spike in retirement, so I want to look into maybe some incentives and strategies so that we can retain and beef up those staffing levels, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Is there anyone else from council who wishes to speak? Seeing none, the meeting stands adjourned at 6:34.